Good evening, and welcome to the ZBA February 18th meeting. Tonight's decisions will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, February 21st, 2020. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, February 21st, 2020. The date a certified copy is recorded on land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, March 8th, 2020. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. Now, we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is Manchotti at 15 Green Street. Are you here? Okay. Would you step up, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If we want to make sure that we have notifications from this applicant before we open the public hearing.
Has the neighbor been notified?
I'm sorry.
Speak in the microphone, name and address.
Michaela Goglatino, 15 Green Street, Wallingford.
Okay. Have the neighbors all been notified?
Yes.
Do we have certificates of mailing with you this evening?
I don't have them with me, but I have--
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
All 11 copies.
Is that okay?
As long as we have receipts, we can proceed.
Okay. Would you read--
Mr. Chairman notes for application 19-027, Minoci, 15 Green Street. Applicant seeks side yard of six feet where 12 feet is required and six feet exists to construct a two-story addition to dwelling at 15 Green Street in an R11 district. Subject properties sought variance for same in December 2018. Applicant received survey waiver for vertical addition to existing structure. Proposed addition per submitted plans referenced an expanded footprint with a vertical addition, therefore resulting in withdrawal of variance request in February 2019. Applicant received additional survey waiver in April 2019 to correlate with two-story proposed addition plans and subsequently is reapplying for variance approval. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Back to you now. Do you have anything you'd like to add, or--
No.
Nothing?
No.
Pardon? Yes. Would you explain the application?
Well, we put an addition on the house from the bottom floor and the second floor, a bathroom and bedroom on the second floor, and a kitchen and bathroom on the first floor.
Any commission members here have questions? What was the reason for the change in the footprint?
I bought this house for closure and want to make it big enough for my brother and I, and needed to add a bedroom and two bathrooms.
And this was the only way that you could do it? I mean, with the original footprint, would it have been large enough if you went up the story?
No.
It couldn't be done?
No.
So this is the only way that you could do it?
This is the only way that I could do it.
Okay. Have you considered the runoff of water into your neighbors with the disturbance of the ground and the land?
I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure that the water runoff would not interfere with any of my neighbor's land.
Okay. Any other questions here at the commission? Lou?
Yes, thank you. So again, so the addition is basically just a vertical increase, correct?
It goes into my backyard--
Right.
--as well as up.
So we're increasing the coverage of the lot?
No, the-- I'm not increasing into anybody else's land.
No, no, no. I mean, like, the total coverage. Are you just going up, or are you going, like, out?
I went out.
Okay.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Would you please give your name and address for the record, please?
Of course.
Thank you.
Joseph Goglatino, 15 Green Street.
Okay.
I'm her brother.
Okay.
To answer your question--
Could you bring the microphone closer to you?
Sorry.
Thank you.
To answer your question, we're expanding on our actual property a little bit, not by much. More than anything, it was about the vertical extension of our property, just like she stated for me to have room to-- for both of us to inhabit. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Is there anybody in favor of this application in the audience? Speak against the application? Okay. Bring it back up here. Action.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve variance 19-027, Minoci, 15 Green Street, variance request for side yard of six feet where 12 feet is required and six feet exists to construct a 410-square-foot two-story addition as shown on plans prepared for Francine Minoci, revised date July 3rd, 2018, and survey waiver granted April 5th, 2019.
Do you have a second? Bob Parisi, second? Vote.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Swinski?
Yes.
And Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Point--
Your application's been approved.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, is please get those certificates of mailing to the office tomorrow, no later, please. Thank you.
Thank you, counselors.
Thank you.
Item two, a variance with Protronics Investment Properties at 28 Parker Street. Mr. Secretary, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For application 19-028, variance use Protronics Investment Properties at 28 Parker Street. Applicant is returning to ZBA after receiving side yard and rear yard variances in July 2019 in order to build a 990-square-foot addition at 28 Parker Street in a CB40 district. Applicant received site plan approval October 2019 for the proposed addition and associated site improvements. Current use of manufacturing is nonconforming use predating zoning. In addition to the building, associated with the nonconforming use also constitutes an expansion of the nonconforming use, which requires compliance with current zoning regulations or variance requests to expand the nonconforming use. Site plan approval was also granted contingent upon applicant securing variance for the expansion of nonconforming use. This office recommends the board consider waiving the application fee associated with this return to ZBA for variance approval since request was not included as part of the July 2019 variance request. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Giuliano. I'm licensed land surveyor and professional engineer with the firm Giuliano Associates. We maintain an office at 405 Main Street in the Elsall section of town. As it was read in, we came back-- we came before this commission in July requesting certain variances. Unfortunately, both my office and staff missed the fact that we needed the use variance. So we went through the entire approval process, your commission, planning and zoning, and we find at the end of our planning and zoning approval, it was discovered that we need this use variance because the actual manufacturing use isn't allowed in that particular zone and that it had been there predating zoning. So we're back before you requesting this use variance so that we can finalize our approval and our Protronics, my client, can move forward with constructing the addition at the particular property. So that is it in a nutshell.
We have any questions here from the commission?
I don't have any, no.
Any questions? Out to the public, does anybody want to speak in favor of this application? Against this application? Back to the commission, motion? Mr. Chairman, if I may, first things first, we need to consider waiving the application fee associated with this application for the variance approval since the request was not included as part of the July 2019 variance request. Is the motion? Did I say waive? That was the motion. Yeah. Motion to waive the fee?
Second.
Okay. Vote?
Motion to waive the fee, Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Swinski?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi? And Chairman Rice?
Yes.
Now the regular motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application 19-028, Protronic Investment Properties at 28 Parker Streets.
Have a motion? Second? Second. Vote?
Motion to approve, Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfert?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Swinski?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, to approve.
And Mr. Rice, Chairman Rice?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Good night.
To.
Item number three is a variance request for use property at 5256 Woodhouse Avenue, Mountain-- Mount Home? Mountain Home?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Staff notes for variance 20-001, variance request/use, Mutino, 52-56 Woodhouse Avenue. Applicant seeks use variance to allow a lot line revision, reducing area of site from 44,391 square feet to 22,500 square feet at 52 through 56 Woodhouse Avenue in an R18 district. Subject site was permitted three-family use under zoning regulations in effect upon construction in 1968, which permitted up to three-family dwellings, provided the minimum lot area conformed to 14,000 square feet per family unit, 42,000 square feet in parentheses. Use variance is required in order to continue three-family residential use with proposed reduction in lot size to 22,500 square feet and proposed lot line revision. Applicant also needs to clearly demonstrate any subdivision history to determine whether re-subdivision approval need follow. Applicant sought variance to divide subject lot in June 2004 and was denied due to lack of demonstrated hardship. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the commission here? Questions? Anybody in-- any people in the public want to comment?
Mr. Chairman, point of order, we should have the applicant perhaps propose their plans.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No problem, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Bob Wiedeman Jr. from Sunwood Development. I'm a local builder and also resident here in Wallingford, living at 75 High Street. The owner of this property is also the applicant, Mario and Stella Montino. My involvement is I have a contract to purchase an adjoining property, and as part of my due diligence, I-- excuse me, I was talking with some of the budding property owners, and they expressed an interest in selling a rear portion of their property to us for our proposed development behind them. During that process, talking with staff, we determined that the property was allowed to be developed as a three-family house, a three-unit townhome, back in 1968. And there was a regulation in effect at that time that allowed multifamily houses if the lot was increased in size. The minimum size requirement, I believe, was 14,000 square feet per dwelling unit. The current regulation is an R18, which is an 18,000-square-foot lot, the current lot that exists today and existed since the time it was built, and well before that was 44,000 and change. So the question became, could he do a lot line revision, moving the lot line, giving me the back portion of his property, and retaining the smaller part-- portion of about 22,500 square feet with the existing house? To the best of my knowledge, although it appears that that's the regulation that this house was built under, I don't believe there was any record that that's how it was done. There were also several other homes in the neighborhood, in the immediate area, that were also built as multifamily around the same timeframe, that were not required to have larger lots, and as far as we can tell from our research, there were no variances requested back then. So it's somewhat complicated in the fact that we're not sure, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, how and why this lot was required to be oversized for the three-family and other lots in the immediate area were not. Other-- there's four properties on the-- in the immediate area, three on Woodhouse Avenue and one on East Main Street, that all appear to fit that description that I just explained, and I hope I was clear in explaining that. It is somewhat complicated. So the last part of my question becomes, how do I ask for a variance for a regulation that is no longer in existence? And that was sort of some of the complication to this. So again, I'm going to kind of defer to staff to maybe explain it from her perspective on why it is we're here. But in the-- at the end of the day, my hope is that you'll see that there is similar instances where this was not required and that we think that we have a reasonable request to reduce the size of this lot. We'll still-- the lot remaining with the three-family house will still be well in excess of the lot size required for the zone as it currently stands. And we're not creating an additional lot. The application that was before you, back 15 or so years ago, was to create an additional lot, so that's not our intention today. This is just to move a lot line, make our lot larger, his lot smaller. I hope that explains clearly enough what we're here for.
Did the staff want to comment?
To expound upon the applicant's presentation, yes, the regulations have changed over time, and the regulations that were in place when this three-family house was constructed and allowed to come to pass were allowed multifamilies based on a square footage lot area, 14,000 square foot per dwelling unit, if you will. So their lot size of 42,000 would have been required to allow a three-family dwelling at the time. So it was constructed according to regulations. Today, the regulations permit a single-family dwelling, and without being able to comment on any neighboring properties and their particular circumstances and how many dwellings or accessory apartments or whatnot, I can't make that comparison without further research. However, today's regulations in that R18 district require 18,000 square feet, but a single-family dwelling. So it was the opinion of staff, the office, and I believe the legal department, that in order to maintain that three-family dwelling, we also needed to maintain a lot area that was required at that time. Otherwise, we revert to the single-family dwelling if you're looking strictly at lot area in a zone. That's why we're here, to see whether or not they may maintain that three-family dwelling by reducing the lot area to 22,000-- is that what it was? Pardon me. Less than what was required at the time. Basically, the change in regulations has forced the variance request today because they need to be compliant today. We can't leave a nonconforming lot, and it would be nonconforming to today's regulations.
Questions, commission? So the proposed 22,500-square-foot lot now, is that acceptable by staff?
That is an acceptable lot area for the R18 zone that this is included in. However, our current zoning regulations only permit single-family dwellings. So again, to maintain that three-family dwelling on a reduced lot size when it was approved for a 42,000-square-foot lot sort of informs the variance request, to maintain that three-family home on the reduced lot. The lot size complies, but the other factors of the zone do not.
What do regulations-- what do the regulations say about three-- they just aren't--
They're just not permitted today. Today's-- all the residential zones and rural residential zones in the town are single-family dwellings only. Things are grandfathered in, as would this be, under today's regulations, but the opinion of the office and of staff is that if it was-- it came to pass as a result of regulations at the time, then the determination at the time should stand or be varied, and at the time it required 42,000 square feet. Today's regulations do not permit multifamily dwellings.
Amy, are there-- are there any other instances that you are aware of where something like this has been done or approved?
Not when-- when, again, look, each situation is unique. So again, going back to any multifamilies or multiple dwelling residences that there may be in the surrounding areas, there may be other circumstances, there may be a different timing, they may predate zoning, there may be an accessory apartment, which we could have under today's zoning regulations to create a second dwelling, if you will, within the confines of the single-family dwelling. So I can't speak to the particulars, but there's many nuances, if you will. I do not know of any other multifamilies that were created at this particular time under this particular regulation that were reduced in lot area at a later time.
Any other questions, commission?
Sir, so you had mentioned that the parcel or the piece being purchased is to be adjoined with a lot that you already own or that you're purchasing as well?
That have an option to purchase, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And what is the intended use when-- are those going to be combined, and what is the intended use there?
So the piece that we're proposing to take off of this lot that we're here for the variance on will be added to my other parcel, which is about three acres in size, two and a half acres in size, and then that will be developed for residential proposed development. It's currently approved for an affordable housing under the 830G statute with affordable housing component, and that 20% of the units would be maintained as affordable. This would allow us to expand that. Right now, the building is one large building as approved with common hallway and elevator. It's a three-story building, and we're proposing to change it into four smaller buildings, two-story buildings with individual accesses rather than a common hallways.
And that wouldn't be able to be done without this piece?
It would be a reduced size. I honestly don't know if it would be feasible without this piece. It's certainly a better project with it, but I know, obviously, financials are not purview-- a reason to approve this, so I do understand that, but--
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Questions in favor from the public?
Again, for the record, Christopher Giuliano, Giuliano Associates. I just wanted to point out that Ms. Tori is correct that three families are typically not allowed in the R18 zone, but I do believe we have two regulations within-- that are on the books, adaptive reuse to multifamily and conversion to multifamily, which are both allowed in the residential districts. So multifamilies are allowed. All those regulations require additional steps in zoning, but I think the comment that they are-- that multifamily is not allowed in the zone isn't exactly true because we do have these other regulations. So again, the only thing that I believe Mr. Wiedeman is asking for is the fact of allowing a multifamily in R18 zone, which in a straight R18 zone isn't allowed, but when converted with one of these other two regulations is. So again, it's just a use variance, the lot meets zoning, so I just wanted to point that out, that there are conditions where multifamily is allowed. Thank you.
Any other people from the public?
I'm here for something else, but I just had a question. ZBA, then, these need hardships, though, right? Non-financial?
Variances of any type, whether they be use or location or size, all require a hardship be demonstrated with the land. These are land use, exactly. They're not variances to people or owners. They're variances granted to the land.
Okay. So I'm just trying to--
With a hardship demonstrated--
So hardship would be--
According--
Like, the first one was because of the size of the property, then that was the hardship in the first one?
You're correct with your--
Okay.
What a hardship--
So there needs to be a hardship to the property?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Okay, back to the commission for--
Amy, could you respond to Mr. Giuliano's comment?
Absolutely. As I mentioned before, not knowing the particular properties in question, that there are varying circumstances, and one of them being that perhaps something predated zoning and the conversion that we speak of, is it permitted if it's a legal nonconforming two-family that may be converted to a three in certain zones? So perhaps that's the case he's referencing. But again, the circumstances are all unique to the properties, and I can't speak to them without knowing, but yes, there are perhaps a two-family predating zoning that applied for and had to go through the process of a multifamily conversion, which would be permitted under certain circumstances.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a couple of the comments, please? Thank you. First off, I'd like to submit for the record, although I know, again, staff has not had time to research these, I do want to put in the record four properties in the immediate area. First one is 160 Woodhouse Avenue. It's a two-unit building on about a 10,000-square-foot lot that was built in 1975. The second property is 28 Woodhouse Avenue. It's a two-unit building on a 6,200-square-foot lot, also built in-- It's a two-unit building on a sixty-two hundred square foot lot, also built in nineteen, I'm sorry, seventy-three. Forty East Main Street, which is just on the other side of Center Street, and that is a two-unit building on a twenty-three thousand square foot lot. And ninety Woodhouse Avenue, which is actually a five-unit building, and this is two houses away from us. We have our our property that we're in question, the gas station, and this is the house immediate to the right of that. So it's the closest one in proximity, and that's a five-unit building on a fourteen thousand square foot lot, fourteen thousand eight hundred square foot lot, and that was built in nineteen sixty-eight. So with your permission, I'll I'll leave these four documents with you just that show the size of the building, the date it was built, and the square footage of the lot. Just for the record, I just delivered to you one sheet for each of those four properties I just mentioned. Yep. I'm happy to get those also for staff tomorrow morning, if you'd like. And while I I know what happened on other properties, it does not necessarily mean it's allowed to happen on this property. It does show a pattern where there was, at the very least, some inconsistencies with how this regulation was utilized back fifty years ago. So I I think the hardship is we're being asked, I guess, two things. One is to comply to a regulation that no longer exists. We're also being asked to comply to a regulation that was, at least in my opinion, enforced arbitrarily, and I can't suggest now why that was done fifty years ago. But I think if you, I guess my hardship would be is why is this particular property owner being treated differently than it appears many other property owners in the immediate area were treated? There's really no current regulation governing this issue. I do realize that, and it is a sort of a delicate or strange kind of a rule, and that's why we we talked with staff and the town attorney, and none of us could really come up with whether this variance was really needed or what the variance was. I I was coming here saying, quite honestly, I'm not sure what I'm asking for because it's not like I'm asking for a variance to a particular regulation. I'm asking for a variance to a regulation that existed once, but is no, does not exist today, which is something that I've never experienced in my career. The lot, and just for a final comment, the lot will continue, it currently does, and with my proposal, will still far exceed the minimum requirement for the zone for a building lot. So we're not creating a non-conforming lot. We are, as Christopher said, we're having a three-family house on a legal-sized lot where a three-family today could not be built without going through some other steps and some various regulations that are allowed. And the lot that we're proposing is still going to be in excess of, I'd say, if not all, the majority of lots in the neighborhood. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We're back here to the Commission for Action. Anybody want to make a motion?
Ms. Tori, can you explain what it means for re-subdivision approval needed?
That would be sort of the legalities, if you will, for making the lot line revision. Would this be classified as as another re-subdivision? Is it a re-subdivision that would be needed to actually complete the transaction, if you will? And that that's what that statement means. You're you're evaluating whether we can reduce the lot, but that the applicant should be prepared to sort of paint the history, if you will, of the lot line movements over time.
And that that would be done in front of planning and zoning?
That that would be in front of their revision with their their attorneys and correct, and that would be finalized or approved or looked at, if you will, through planning and zoning. Folks are entitled to, for for example, a free cut, if you will, or to to slice off a piece of their lot or just transfer half, but in this case, there's been a lot of subdividing and re-subdividing, and the history is a little bit tricky. So just to be clear on that, for for them to be enabled to make this revision should you grant the variance.
Are you aware of the the sheets that you brought up? Are you aware of any of those particular parcels had a similar situation, or were those originally those sized lots from the get-go? Any any idea on that, or whether they'd since been subdivided at all? I don't know if you, we haven't gotten a chance to research this at all, so I was kind of curious if-
Um, I don't know. Are you asking if they were larger than the sizes of the lots they are as they are currently today? I don't know that. I only know what the lot size is today and what the building use is currently on it. I don't know if those lots were larger when they were created.
Yeah, where where I was going was, you know, obviously, if there was one of these that was something similar was done more recently, it would show some sort of precedent.
The the only one that I really have any background knowledge on is ninety Woodhouse Avenue, the five-unit building, and that's only because the property owner that I'm purchasing from also was a builder, Donnie Ahern, is a well-known developer in town for many years. You probably know the name. He built both the three-family house that we're talking about today in this application and also that five-family house on the on that property, which is a significantly smaller lot. And he owned the other property that his office and warehouse are currently located on. So that was done at the exact same time or within a year of each other.
Thank you.
Obviously, a much smaller lot, and for 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 some unknown reason, they did five units on that one and three on this one.
Thank you. And Amy, if I could just ask, so why exactly is it considered an expansion of non-conforming use?
The regulation, just like something that predate zoning is allowed to continue, this was, this came to be as a result of regulations at the time. The regulations have since changed. It has been allowed to continue because it predates today's regulations, and it was legal at the time, just like any grandfathering, if you will, or non-conformity that's allowed to continue. The basis for this, the decision that was presented, was the density was only allowed as a result of the lot size that was required at the time. So therefore, reducing the lot size sort of negates that claim to, that that's the premise of the the decision of the office and the legal staff was, it was created under those circumstances, so those circumstances should continue in order for that three-family density, if you will, to continue.
Is that is that premise, is that a, is that a premise that's been used in prior applications?
I I can't answer these. As Mr. Wedeman has pointed out, not time to research these properties that have been submitted to you and what circumstances they came to be, whether there were variances involved. All we have is how many units exist today and their lot size, but not the situation, the individual situation. So I I can't answer that. That again, was a determination that was, if this came to be and one was allowed to have this extra density, if you will, and and this involves the property of fifty-two, fifty-six Woodhouse, not the adjoining property that would gain the the land, that's that's a different issue. This application is regarding fifty-two and fifty-six, but to allow that to continue, so should the circumstances that it came to be at the time.
I make a motion that the variance be approved for expansion of non-conforming use, three-family dwelling lot area where no expansion is permitted into revised property line and reduced lot area at fifty-two, fifty-six Woodhouse Avenue, as shown on the property in topographic survey lot line revision prepared for Mario and Stella Montenno, dated January sixteen, two thousand twenty. So moved.
Motion to approve. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Zawinski?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, to approve.
Chairman Rice?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Number four is a variance request for heightened lot coverage, Choat Rosemary Hall Foundation at one thirty-eight North Elm Street. Your correspondent, Mr.?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, correspondence for variance number two zero dash zero zero two. Variance request, height and lot coverage, Choat Rosemary Hall Foundation, Inc., one thirty-eight North Elm Street. Applicant seeks variance for building height of forty-five feet, eight inches, where forty-five feet, eight inches exists, and maximum thirty feet is allowed, and lot coverage is eighteen point seven percent, where eighteen point three percent exists, and maximum fifteen percent is permitted to renovate and construct additions to fire-damaged Hill House building at one thirty-eight North Elm Street in an R eighteen district. Applicant represents the addition of two thousand square feet of building area, which increasing lot coverage by point four percent is necessary to provide improvements to accessibility, required accommodations, meeting updates to, meeting updates to building code slash requirements, and as well, better serving the safety and well-being of students and staff. Applicant will continue to planning and zoning for special permit approval following ZBA determination. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm. To my left is Richard Salz, who's the chief financial officer at Choat Rosemary Hall. There are other members of the team in the audience in case the board should have any questions that we can't handle. The property, as you know from the application, is one thirty-eight North Elm Street. It is a portion of the Choat Rosemary Hall campus. Property is owned R eighteen, and it's about ten acres in size, as you can tell from the plans submitted as part of our appeal. This particular appeal involves the Hill House proposed renovations, as you'll note in the application, which will be discussed this evening. The genesis of this appeal stems from the renovation plans, is a combination of fire and water damage at Hill House and a need and desire to comply with current standards and requirements for accessibility, public safety, and compliance with the American Disabilities Act. Interestingly, when we met with your staff before we submitted the application, there was some discussion about whether we actually needed a variance because the law department has indicated in the past that P and Z could allow exceptions to their regulations when it's for accessibility, public safety in those items, but we thought perhaps it's better just to go forward with the ZBA so that we're clearly compliant, and should we get your approval hopefully this evening. The campus has been developed, as you know, for a period of about one hundred and twenty-five years in Wallingford. Here, the plan is to renovate the Hill House building. We're going to have some some boards for you to look at in in a few minutes. I just want to give you the legal background for the application. So we're going to expand, with your permission, the footprint to accommodate the goal set forth in paragraph five of the application. So if you have the application before, I'll just go through it with you. It provides the basis of the hardship. Again, the new expansion of the building footprint and the height of the building, again, the height not being any taller than the existing building, it's just that the building would be longer, actually, it would be symmetrical. You'll see that in the pictures. The hardship arises in order to provide additional space necessary for improved emergency means of egress, accommodations that will comply with all the current codes. Again, this would be all updated current codes, provide improved access to egress paths for building occupants in the dorm rooms and faculty apartments, and provide conventional straight-run stairs to replace the previously installed spiral stairs that was requested by your fire marshal, all designed for public safety. Also, provide additional space that is necessary to construct an ADA-compliant accessible access pathway. You'll see that in the plans that we've submitted to you. So again, the desire is to make sure that everything is safer and more ADA-compliant. Lastly, there's a desire to improve and install a state-of-the-art HVAC and plumbing systems that will not only comply with currently adopted energy codes, but also allow the school to construct a LEED gold-certified project. So all of these changes arise from new standards. Again, we've been there for one hundred and twenty-five years or so, but this will allow expansion that will be code-compliant with the requirements today, primarily accessibility and to make sure everything is ADA-compliant and to provide for the public safety. So that's been spelled out in the application. You've seen the plans. There is no proposed increase in student body or faculty, no proposed increase in activities. Again, it's it, the genesis of this is to comply with all the current codes and make that whole location more safe and better environmentally sensitive for the HVAC and plumbing systems. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Richard to go to the easel and just present the larger picture of what you have in your packet.
Just to acclimate you to the to the building, to the center of campus, it's comprised, this is Hill House. In two thousand fifteen, we applied and you granted a permit to build a new student center, which is attached to Hill House, and behind it is a hall in West Wing, which is a dorm and our dining facilities. So this, this is in the center of campus, coming off Christian Street with North Main, between North Main and North Elm. The fire, which happened in July, really just hit the center, it was a lightning strike that hit the center of Hill House, and the fire department from Wallingford and I think three other towns came by and put out the fire, and unfortunately, the water damage required the whole inside of the building to be gutted. So right now, it's it's an empty shell. We retained the architect that did the student center because he knows the building, and we want to get this designed and start construction as quickly as possible. So there's only two small additions. It's about eighteen hundred square feet in addition to the north side of the building, where we extend the building a little bit, and this is in your packet. Also, this picture's in your packet. And then on the west side, making a corridor that equals the design on the south side of the, on the south side of the building, so that there is egress going from the student center straight through to the library or outside. Previously, you'd have to go through the, through the south part of the building and then through some offices to get out. So we're trying to make easier egress to, in the in the first floor of the building to, for everyone to get out of the dining hall or through the building in case they had to get out in an emergency. The added part up here on the north side allows us to get rid of the spiral staircases that were mentioned. So you have in the apartments, in the, there are four faculty apartments, two of them had spiral staircases. Now, straight-run staircases take up more space, so we had to expand that, the space to accommodate for that. We're also, in fact, decreasing the number of students in in the building because the bathrooms have to be bigger for handicap access. We have single occupancy bathrooms. There's an elevator that now goes to the fourth floor to allow the ADA access to the apartments. It wasn't on the fourth floor before. So all this is requiring us to expand the footprint slightly. And it's just a, another picture of the, of the Hill House circle and the topography with the, with the- grades on there, just to show you what the grades are on the site. And this, you can see, as was just mentioned, the building was originally built in 1926. It was added on in the 1940s, and it was added on on one side. And what we want to do now is make it symmetrical again, as the architecture should be. So we're adding on about 24 feet going into this archway. But again, it allows us to become, to have the space become more compliant with current code.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, if I might, just turning back to the application and pointed out by Mrs. Torre in her comments, the request is to increase the lot coverage by 0.4%, so four tenths of one percent. It's barely perceptible, frankly. And the height variance would be keeping the building at the same height that it is currently. So you'll note on the application that we've identified the current height, and it's just extending the building so that it is symmetrical and more code compliant. Thank you.
Any questions here from the commission? If no questions from the commission, we'll go to the public. Anybody want to speak in favor of this application? Anybody want to speak against this application? Okay, we're back up here. We have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve application number 20-002, variance request and lot coverage for Choat Rosemary Hall Foundation, Inc. at 138 North Elm Street.
Second.
We have a motion here?
Motion to approve. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Zawinski?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, to approve.
Chairman Rice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number five is a variance request for front landscaping at 11 Ives Road, requested by Mr. Blackfelt.
Mr. Chairman, we staff notes for application 20-003, variance request, front landscaping, Blackfelt, 11 Ives Road. Applicant seeks variance for front yard landscaping of 25 feet where 50 feet is required to establish vehicle storage area associated with approved dealers and repair facility at 11 Ives Road in an RF40 district. This office has insufficient information to fully review this proposal. Applicant seeks a landscaping variance, yet general location survey dated January 8, 2020 includes no such landscaping plan. Additionally, the variance request and surveyor's notes regarding necessary variances are inconsistent. If no additional materials are submitted and reviewed prior to the February 18, 2020 ZBA meeting, we recommend the application should be continued to March 16, 2020 meeting to enable submission and review of a complete proposal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, member of the commission. For your record, my name is Patrick Hughes. To my left is Joseph Blackfelt. We submitted and complied based upon the phone call that we received and we brought the additional plans.
You should have the receipt of the revised map, which we do have. So the comments that I as staff submitted to you all were crossed over with the revised map, so.
Yeah, let me add, we do have correspondence, a map for application 20-003, received February 13, 2020. Thank you.
We have questions here from the commission?
Can you just describe this application a little bit more in depth and explain your hardship?
Yeah, absolutely. This parcel was part of a larger parcel, approximately 12.36 acres, I believe it was, at one point. Back in 1995, the owners had come up with a plan to carve this section out. It's a triangular piece of 0.92 acres. The remaining parcel is comprised of ShopRite, the former Sears, that area down there off of Ives Road. So in 1995, I believe it was an industrial zone where 25 feet was required for front landscaping. Unfortunately, it didn't get, the plans were drafted in 95, then it can convey it and eat it until 1997, the change of ownership entitled it to go out there. The way that the property is designed now as a triangle, the 50 feet would be, take away much of the proposed use, if any feasible use for the property that it can be used. In exchange, we proposed in the revised plans significant amount of interior landscaping to offset the sort of the variance that we're seeking for, for the front landscaping. I believe in the proposed plan, we're looking for, we need 20 feet of interior landscaping per automobile space, so it would be a total of 2,000 interior landscaping feet. And if you look at what we proposed in the revised plans, there's far more than that. So it's the nature of the size and the shape of the property that's causing the hardship with the 50-foot front landscaping requirement.
And this is just for storage of vehicles?
Yes, it's not going to have public use, nor is it going to have traffic even going really in and out of it, other than excess storage for the new vehicle inventory. So it's just for storage. Currently, I don't know if any of you have seen the property. It's an eyesore, and it's going to be cleaned up. It's currently under the investigation process by the current owners because it had, it needed remediation. So as of right now, there is really no use for it while it's going to be under remediation, and the remediation, quite frankly, wouldn't even continue. If it's not going to have an intended use, it'll just stay as it is. Furthermore, the owner will actually, now, the owner wouldn't want to continue with the property tax that they're paying on it because it's assessed as a lot when it's not being used as anything.
Any other questions here from the commission?
So in the staff notes here, it says to establish vehicle storage area associated with approved dealers and repairs facility at 11 Ives Road. So there's no repair facility at 11 Ives Road, though?
No, it would be associated with a current business on Route 5.
Okay.
And so that's how it would qualify to be used as storage for that existing business? I believe that we put that language in there so it couldn't be used as sort of like a commuter lot or anything like that. Wanted to establish exactly what the use was for, that it would only be for new or used cars associated with. With an existing business. Licensed business and not, you know, as I mentioned, for example, a commuter lot.
Amy, can you chime in in regards to the staff notes about the insufficient information? Is that, does this map clear that up?
As I mentioned before, there was a crossover doing staff notes and unable to do so on the original map that was submitted. The applicant has submitted a revised one. This is a landscaping-only variance. This applicant will have to go on, obviously, through planning and zoning to complete the process, but prior to doing so, there's a landscaping requirement they must meet, and yet the original submission, the original map, didn't speak to landscaping. So we asked them to provide the details about the landscaping they were providing, the trees, the grass, where it was located, and they've demonstrated that with this revised map you have. So my staff notes significantly have been revised as well, and we can certainly see by the map that was revisions of February 10, 2020. My motions for you all will be altered as well, so be mindful of that. Do demonstrate that there's an excess in interior landscaping that the applicant is offering as a trade-off, if you will, for the lack of front landscaping that they're able to give on this parcels.
Thank you.
Will there be a lot of movement in here, or what is the design for the entire thing here?
There really should be no movement. I mean, what we have with the requirements that the manufacturers are now putting on car dealers, they want us to stock more and more and more inventory. In conjunction with that, they also want us to provide the customers with service. And so as the business grows and we need to provide service, we need to have much more service parking on the actual business lot. So what that creates is a big problem for the dealership, is where do we put the inventory? So I mean, I'm sure, as you know, you can drive around Wallingford and see where new car dealers are storing cars, and we're trying to do everything possible to prepare for the future as well as the need right now and have a proper situation with, you know, a cleaned up lot with lighting and pavement and everything correct. So as far as the movement goes, this is going to be where the new cars will be placed and, you know, as cars get sold and we need to just keep cars on the lot for demonstration and, you know, showing the customer. But this is not going to be where we want to conduct business of any sort.
I apologize, those questions are more planning and zoning than what we are here now, but we're here just for landscaping and what have you.
Exactly.
So will the landscaping be done at the end, or what are you going to be doing here?
So, I mean, the process of what's going to be done is, right now, it's under an investigation process, which is quite detailed. The money that the owner has currently spent is astronomical due to new requirements by DEB. So as far as the next stage is going to be, is we can go forward with our use because it's only pavement, so they'll be able to remediate and go forward because we're not constructing a building at this point. That remediation, you know, may take years as far as, because it's very far deep down. There's a water aquifer, and it's a complicated process, but they have a way of remediating it. So they can do that with us, the flexibility of being able to move cars as they might need to remove material or put the system as in to remediate. So this would allow, and it's really, it works out to be a great solution for us and for the current owner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, for staff. The applicant mentioned that this is an acceptable lot, tying in with the North Colony Road dealership. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct, but they'll need the approval through the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, which is why they need to have all the site elements, and this being the one in question right now, offering lesser on the front landscaped area. But also, you'll note per your map that because it's storage as opposed to sort of an operational lot, if you will, they can reduce the size of the spaces so there's more ability to give greenery and larger buffers and more landscaping and other areas within the lot beyond the front landscaping. This is strictly a front landscaping. They're supposed to provide 50 feet, which would take a significant portion of the lot again, and this is what they've proposed to offer in exchange.
And if I can just add, it's on Ives Road, this isn't Route 5. So, I mean, a variance was given for the bank across the street where they only have down to as little as eight or 13 feet on that side. So, I mean, it's really going to benefit the whole area in terms of cleaning up because, like I said, if anyone's driven through there, I mean, I just stumbled upon it and contacted the owner, and they, quite frankly, they forgot they even owned it, other than the accounts payable, making property tax payments, and, you know, they were like, oh my gosh, we forgot. And it's a big company that owns it, so it's been an eyesore, and like I said, I just think it works out great for everyone.
Thank you. Any other questions here from the commission? If not, do we have anybody in the public in favor of this? Anybody want to speak against this? Okay, we're back up to the commission for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve application 20-003, variance request, front landscaping, Blackfelt, 11 Ives Road.
Second.
Motion and second? Vote.
Motion to approve. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Zawinski?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, to approve.
Chairman Rice?
Yes, to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and thank you to the staff as well.
Okay, item number six is a variance request used by Malton at 100 Center Street. Your correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Application 20-004, variance request, Malton, 100 Center Street. Applicant requests use variance to allow office, in parentheses, medical, to be located ground level, street facing, where office use is not permitted within 50 feet ground level, street facing, at 100 Center Street in the TC District. The 50-feet ground level, street facing setback applies to two sides as this is a corner property fronting on two streets, Center Street and William Street. This office had a discussion with the applicant regarding the uses and requirements of the Town Center Zone adopted August 2018. Applicant was also advised that rather than seeking a variance, the more appropriate avenue is to propose a zoning text amendment via the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission has commenced review of the newly adopted Town Center regulations. To that end, the PZC held a special meeting/ workshop on Tuesday, February 4, 2020, which included discussion and proposal to eliminate the office 50-foot setback, street facing, ground level for secondary street where a property is a corner property, street facing on two sides. Should this change be adopted, the applicant need only comply with the Center Street 50-foot street facing ground level requirement for office use, and it would not require variance approval for 50-feet setback on William Street. Applicant was advised to consider compliant means of locating the office use component of 100 Center Street and/or proposing specific plan, reducing the scope of requesting variance before occupying the space and commencing interior configuration. There are no dimensions provided or component uses identified for the site known as 100 Center Street. The accompanying proposal with this application remains unchanged from the first meeting with staff. This office would recommend the board request a detailed, clearly defined application and consistent proposal before issuing any determination. Should the applicant choose to move forward or move forward determination without a clear representation, then this office cannot support the granting of this variance on the grounds that there is absence of hardship and alternative or alternatives for compliant or more compliant options exist. We also have, let's see here, also have correspondence received February 18 from Joseph W. Simmons, Jr. to the Planning and Zoning Committee in, and also, I think that's it. Thank you.
Point of order. Mr. Secretary, we also have also a memorandum, the report issued by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Right, sorry. So also a memorandum, date February 13, 2020, regarding variance application 20-004, 100 Center Street. Thank you.
Okay. Identify yourself, name and address.
I'm Dr. Tracy Malton. My personal address or the Zonian address? Do you want, we're talking about 100 Center Street? Do you want me to talk about that address or where I reside? or where I reside?
You're probably where you reside.
Okay, so one sixty seven Stonehedge Lane in Guilford, Connecticut.
Okay, when you talk, make sure you talk closer to your mic too.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, thank you very much for hearing our request. We're, we are requesting to be allowed to move my chiropractic office to one hundred Center Street and open a wellness center on that location. It's in the old Wallingford Bank and Trust Building. Apparently this has raised quite a stir behind closed doors from what I've been hearing. The request as a stand is that we be allowed to include many practitioners in the space that may be considered medical by some, my office being one of them. Although my office has more in common with a health spa than it does a medical. And we were told on day one that I'm currently being classified as medical as it stands. This building is unique among all the buildings along Center Street and according to the Record Journal, it was first erected in eighteen ninety and it was added on in nineteen sixty-three, which doubled the size of the structure. The building has always been used as a bank, except it had a dentist that once occupied the right side of the building. We do have a old picture here if you want to visualize what it used to look like. You can see the dentist placard in the front window there. So the hardship is that the building, the hardship that this building presents is that it is not designed as a retail space. It does not have any storefront presence like any of the other buildings that are located along Center Street. The windows that it, that it does have are small and very tall. They, they're four foot, eight inches off the ground. As you can see the picture there of the building, I'm sorry, it's, it's kind of on the smaller side. The original structure is on the right hand side as you see it, the lighter colored stone and the darker stone is the additional work that was done in nineteen sixty-three. But you can see that you cannot really see on the inside because those windows are quite small and unless you have a step stool, you really can't really peer in and see what's happening on inside as you can with the other, other establishments on Center Street. The only window that might be an exception is on the corner, there's a diagonal window that is on Williams and Center and it does have some better visibility, although behind that window, it is mostly obscured by a stairway. So it doesn't even have a storefront visibility either. In addition, the additional hardship in this is that it does a rather large vault at the posterior side of the building, which we will be showing you on the plans here, which makes putting my practice on the back side of the building rather difficult because we can't move that one direction or the other. So trying to conform office space around it is a bit challenging, if not impossible in some areas. The other unique hardship that this building has is it's actually is the historic value of this building. The building was the very first bank that was ever erected in Wallingford, so I think that's kind of cool. And it was built in two parts. The part that was built in eighteen ninety, like I said, it's the lighter side of the building there. When you go inside, it actually has a quite magnificent plasterwork ceiling. It is breathtaking. So you can see the pictures that he's bringing around now are showing what it originally looked like there. We were able to peek above the drop ceiling that is currently there that they put in in nineteen sixty-three, which covered up everything. So most people who have been in that building have no idea of the beauty that's behind it. We took a couple of pictures that are up there so you can see what the plasterwork looks like. So that's just one of the filigrees and you can see the dental work on the side. You see, it's, it's really breathtaking and it's quite a shame that they decided to just punch holes right in the middle of that beautiful, beautiful work. That building, when it was originally built, was erected, they said it cost about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to build this building. In today's dollars, that'd be about one point four million dollars. And a significant portion of that was doing those detailed ceilings. Also, what's kind of unique on the inside, there's one other picture there. You can see the, the addition side, it's, it actually doesn't level in. So the, the side that's on the left, again, that older looking, the darker looking stonework, the ceiling is about two and a half foot higher and it has no detailing, no plasterwork. It's, it's about, the plasterwork is about six and a half feet above the existing drop ceiling and on the non-plasterwork side is an additional eight and a half feet. So they don't even abut to each other, which is interesting. And if we could find somebody who had the skill to restore that, it would be astronomically expensive to do so. And I was told that there are only three people in the United States that could actually do that work today. I'd like to be able to, if we divide the building lengthwise, which is what we would like to do, we'd like to the opportunity to be able to preserve that ceiling and restore it potentially for future generations to enjoy. As the request that you have in front of you was presented, we are hoping to allow a variety of practitioners into this space, not this just straight retail or restaurant space, which is what they're looking at. I currently have a yoga studio that you're really awaiting to find out what your guys' ruling is on this because they would like to take the, the left side of the building with me taking the right side of the building. If, if we're made to cut the building in half horizontally, it's not as desirable for them because in the beginning, front part of the building, there's, there's two business offices that are structural and it would kind of cut into their space and they quite frankly, don't want it. Yoga, massage are currently acceptable uses in that space and they would be on that first floor as well. So the regulations, as they were written in two thousand and eighteen, were basically written to generate foot traffic. That's, they're trying to revitalize the downtown center and they want to get people downtown. And the way I believe they potentially see a medical office is not generating that, that office space. And, you know, I'm currently located in the, in the downtown center. My office is less than one block away. My office does have retail windows and it would make a much better retail space than what the, the bank building does because it doesn't have that visibility. One of the main reasons that I want to move is that I'm currently outgrowing my space. I currently see about seventy-five to a hundred patients per day in my space and I do so without any parking and people, we only have a couple on-street parking. So when I was looking for a space, I was looking for something with a parking lot. I was looking for something that was easily accessible, ground floor. So, you know, people with disabilities, people that have mobility issues can be able to get in. The current zoning wants to put anything that's considered medical on the second floor. Currently, the building doesn't really have much of a second floor to speak of, a very small area in the back and a very small area in the front, which would not be usable for our space as well as just people with mobility issues could not get there. When we looked up the regulations, when I, when I did look to purchase the building, we did look at the, what the regulations were. Unfortunately, we chose Google and Google listed the old regs since they're relatively new, they did not have, they did not bring up the two thousand and eighteen regs, they took the older regs. And chiropractic and metal heel use was not disallowed on those. And because my office is less than a block away, I didn't see any reason to distrust Google. So I did not do any further research other than that, said, okay, it's use, I put in my bid and we proceeded forward on that. The majority of people who come to my office usually spend about ten to fifteen minutes. In the beginning, they come multiple times per week at the beginning of care. We also have open adjusting times, which means that people can come, it's not a scheduled time in that it's a first come, first served. And so a lot of times when people come, there may be a wait. So when there's a wait, a lot of times they'll say, oh, I got a couple of people in front of me, I'm going to run next door, get a haircut. They'll run around the corner, go to the Chocolateer or Cindy's Unique and do a little shopping, then come back when it might be a little bit quieter. Cindy's Unique just moved, so we've got less area for them to go. Most people choose not to cross North Colony just because it's a busy street and getting across there, I just, people just don't tend to do that. So they're very excited about me moving up the hill where they've got knuckleheads and tatas to be able to go and get a bite to eat before their, after their adjustment. We still have a barber that'll be right next door, which is wonderful. And there's an art center, so a lot of, I do see a lot of kids. And so I have a bunch of families that are excited that they'll be able to pop over after their art classes, which will be very nice. So we're able to increase, you know, put traffic to those neighboring businesses as well, which will be also very beneficial to those businesses. And like I said, our office is more like a spa because we do have a higher turnover. We do have people coming and going often. I have parents that will meet in our office, exchange kids, you know, with grandparents and whatnot. It's kind of a central place that people meet up. So as I said, I see a significant number of people on daily basis. I would also like to expand. I'd like to be able to get another chiropractor in, you know, a hundred people a day with one person's challenging sometimes. So if I had another doctor, would make it a little easier on myself, but it would also allow me to see more people, which would bring more people into the downtown center, which is really what the regulations, the spirit of the regulations are. They want to get more people to the downtown, more people to be able to walk up and down the street. And, and if you'll notice in the packet, I also had a little petition that we had in the office for just, just a few days. And you'll notice that there are people who are residents and people who are not residents. And we had them check that off purposely so that you could see how many people that are out of the area that we are bringing into downtown Wallingford on a, you know, regular basis so that they can be a part of our community and visit other neighboring shops. As of, through all this, I've had, have been addressed the fact that I'm going to have additional tenants in this space. It's a lot bigger than what I will need on my own. The additional people will also be bringing more people in, into the downtown in addition to what my practice is bringing. We want it to be a wellness center, so I want to have other healthcare people in the center. And as the regs are written now, that is, is not currently allowed. Time Magazine named health and wellness, one of the top growing fields. They projected a twenty-one percent growth in seven years. So people need more healthcare practitioners and we need to have a space for them to be in. I have many people who have contacted me are approved, currently approved uses, you know, such as yoga, Reiki, massage, you know, but I also have occupational therapists. I have naturopaths, homeopaths that would also, would love to have the space. So I would love it, I would absolutely love it if you would grant me full use of the space so I can make this the wellness center that I can envision. But I also understand that I'm willing to accommodate some of the needs of the town as well. So I would like to, to give the town a gift of being able to use the parking because as you know, parking is a premium in downtown, especially in the evening. And we have twenty parking spaces currently and if everything goes the way we expanded to, we'll probably have about twenty-five parking spaces available. And after six o'clock, the neighboring restaurants and whatnot will be able to utilize those parking spaces. Also, if you would like to see that fifty-foot setback honored, the fifty-foot setback gives approximately two thousand six hundred and ninety-one square feet of space that is for usable space. If you allow us to divide the building lengthwise as we have proposed here, we would be willing to stipulate that that amount of square footage would be dedicated to usable or acceptable uses as you, you guys have in the current regulations. The division lengthwise is also safer. It gives secondary egresses, which in case of a fire emergency would be much more beneficial to anyone who's in the building. The horizontal would not get that access. So in closing, this building is unique among the, all the Center Street properties. There's nothing else like it. Its hardship is that it does not conform to the needs of a storefront or retail property as the other building, other businesses do. It also honors the spirit of the regulation, which is that it brings people to the downtown. And it also has a history that should be honored so that we can bring that back so future generations can experience the beauty that this building has to offer. Thank you.
Do you have anything else to say?
Yes, actually, what I'd like to do is first, I'm Steve Lazarus, Lazarus and Sargent Architects here in Wallingford. I need to start by thanking staff for helping to focus our, this project. There, there was a mention in staff comments that more information would really be appropriate and there's been a push toward having the building become as compliant as possible. And, and as a result of that, I think this is probably, in front of me is probably version seven or eight for, for revisions, which has brought us to the point where should you decide that you want us to come as close as possible to complying with the regulation as it stands, we would be able to take roughly nine hundred square feet of space that's in the setback area and provide that in, in the area behind the setback. And I'm going to just show you that on the plan. Is this on, good, okay. So this is the dread fifty-foot setback line. The regulation as currently written requires that everything up to that line be accepted first floor uses such as retail, for example, or a spa. The space behind that line would all be acceptable for, for a medical office space. The space behind the line is actually a little bit bigger in square footage. It's about twenty-eight hundred square feet. This is about twenty-seven hundred square feet. So strictly adhering to the regulations, we would be able to take a little bit more than half of the building and make that into medical office. Now we entirely compliant with the elimination of the fifty-foot side yard or side street setback, which I think we're all kind of counting on, on happening. So what we did, and again, with help from staff, we kept on trying to take as little space in the front, in front of the fifty-foot line and dedicate that to medical office use to push that as far back as we can. So all this stuff which is uncolored is going to be medical office space and is allowed to be medical office space. It's this little blue section over here, which under the regulations is not allowed to be medical office space. That totals nine hundred and four square feet. We're suggesting that by putting that nine hundred and four square feet over here, that we will have met the spirit of the regulation. We will have approved uses which generate all the traffic that the town wants in a slightly different configuration in this building. Now, why would you give us permission to do that? The reason why I think you want to give us permission to do that is that this part of the building here is the part which has the beautiful pictures of the plasterwork, the beautiful, this is spectacular space. It's arguably, I don't want to embarrass you, it might be slightly more beautiful in this room. Okay, so normally there's a lot of controversy when, when an applicant comes before you and, and there's a discussion about how there's a financial hardship, the applicant is trying to not spend money and that's the hardship. In this case, I'm delighted to say that the applicant actually wants to spend more money on the project. Doing the project this way doesn't make financial sense at all. Taking this space and making it into a beautiful restored space doesn't make sense to anybody. Cover your ears. So, so the, the idea of taking this space and connecting it with this space so that you have a beautiful restored space doesn't make financial sense, but it makes sense given the hardship of the building. It's a historic monument, frankly, and it should be honored. So once you make this space So, once you make this space adjoin with this space, in order to be in the spirit of the regulation, we need to give compensatory space somewhere else. And that's what this space over here is. Okay, so, the last thing that we did, and Amy hasn't seen this, there is a lot of discussion in our last meeting with staff, that there are windows here, this is center street. We, at the last meeting, had medical office use coming right up to this facade. At this point, we've converted that space to retail space, so that we don't have any medical office space coming to the front. I, I think we've taken the spirit of, of the regulation and made this plan work. Now, at this point, the, the layout of the medical office building is exactly what Dr. Maltin would do. She would love it if you said, you know, "This is such a great project. We should grant the variance you applied for. Our variance says we want to be able to use medical office everywhere." That would mean that there could be a Reiki treatment going on here, which apparently is currently not allowed. Other treatments could go on in this, these other spaces. And that would be the flexibility that would make this, frankly, even nicer for our downtown. But at the very least, to start the project in the right direction, we need a variance granting us relief from the 50-foot side street setback. And we need a variance allowing us to put 904 square feet in the front 50-foot setback elsewhere on the first floor. And so, that's what we're looking for. It's a project, when completed, I can't wait to be in that space. Thank you. Steve?
Uh, hold on. Staff have more remarks?
First, I think there, there, there needs to be a... We need to direct your, your determinations, your actions, your review, as well as the applicants, to what the application says. This application is not for a wellness center or a combination of items. This application is for office use to not be within the 50-foot setback. So, that's what we're responding to this evening. If there is something other than that, then perhaps we need to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a determination of, of the type of use it is. But that's what we're responding to this evening. So, if it's something different, we need to change the application. So, responding to that, the medical portion of this building, or all the users within this building, the medical office piece of it, component, if you will, needs to be 50 feet off, off the ground-facing, street-facing ground level. Excuse me. In this case, on two sides. There is discussion, as, as my staff comments mentioned already, that they're under review. These are newly adopted regulations, not taking into consideration, perhaps, plus the test of the Planning and Zoning Commission to see if there are any tweaks are necessary. It was a very deliberate process to develop these, these, this particular regulation, or piece of the town center regulations in concert with the public and the merchants and the residents in town. Not perhaps thinking about the detriment when something is a corner property. So, things are moving in that, in that direction, and that's under consideration, as I mentioned already. To vary the regulations at an early date, when that's the proper avenue to go, is, is concerning at best. But again, we want to remain that the focus being we're speaking of the medical office component of this. I think there's too many labels. Other users, other permitted uses, ground level, street-facing, those components of this building, or other users that maybe become tenants or such, to be compliant would be lovely. I haven't had a chance, as Mr. Lazarus has pointed out, to review this most current proposal. I would ask that you review it thoroughly and, and understand what the compensatory exchange is. Be mindful of the Planning and Zonings report that was issued, welcoming a new proposal to come before them, but not supporting self-imposed hardship as was proposed prior to this evening, which was really, we didn't have dimensions, we didn't have compensatory square footage figures. There, there have been some discussions, but we had nothing to review to be able to comment thoroughly on. That would be staff position now. It, it certainly is up to the board, but I ask that we be mindful of the fact that the application we're speaking to is for office use. And, and if there are other components which are permitted use components, then I would suggest that consideration be given, that those components be located accordingly, or perhaps await the regulation, perhaps amendment, which would not, which would permit it to be street-facing ground level on the secondary street, in this case, William Street.
Chairman, may I ask a question of Amy?
Yes.
When you say office, you do mean medical office? Our application is specifically for, so, so if this application is granted, an insurance office could not move into this space. It's for medical office use. I just wanted to clarify that. Would you agree with that?
That's your representation on, on the application. However, the, the regulation applies to office use and medical office use, being, having the same setback.
Right, but can, if the variance is granted, can it be limited to medical office use for this space? Can, can that be a stipulation?
The board may consider conditions and a, of any sort, to that effect, because yes, any office use would be interchangeable. Such, same thing with defining something as a, a, for example, I'll use your own example, a wellness center and having components of, say, yoga and such. Those are permitted uses, but that will not limit those users to be yoga users. They can be any permitted use, because it follows the land, so...
Thank you, Amy. We, we would actually welcome the stipulation that it could only be for medical use, office use, not office use, because we think office use of this building would be a terrible thing.
You all set, Amy?
Amy, I had a question about the, the setback of the 900-square-foot blue area. How far setback is that?
Okay, good, still on. This is the 50-foot setback. And so, this is about 12 or 14 feet here, up to the 50-foot setback line. There's a, you've all been by this building a million times. Probably, you've all been in the building. You just don't see in these windows. They just about, they are spectacularly beautiful, but they're at this height, and you just don't see into them. And so, it's really a gesture of, of cooperation to say, "Okay, let's make sure the allowed uses are by the street, and by golly, we want to be cooperative." But the truth of the matter is, it doesn't make any difference where the allowed, in my opinion, it doesn't make any difference where the allowed uses are, as long as the quantity of allowed uses is there, because we all believe that those allowed uses generate the most traffic. And so, what we're saying is, the green and the yellow, when you add that up, those are all allowed by the current zoning regulations and would provide the traffic that happens as a result of providing that, that square footage.
Can I just ask you one other question while you're up there?
Sure.
So, the, the section in the front, the 12-foot section, it looks like, is that a staircase?
Yeah, there's a staircase here. There's another staircase back here. What's going to happen is, this area in here is going to all be sales, a sales display area, so that there won't be, initially, the last, and, and it was actually Ms. Hand who objected, we had this whole space as a treatment space, so that it meant that if you did kind of go like this and look in, you might have seen somebody on a treatment table. And the concern was that, for privacy, you'd end up covering those windows. And covering those windows would not be a good thing. It's nice to see the glass and at least have the, to, to see up, at least, as you look into those windows. And so, by making this into a sales area, we changed the plan, so that there's no longer an objection about privacy in the front.
And how many square feet is that area? Is it, is it a usual, usable space for...
Yeah, actually, it's, it's about 200 square feet here. And that 200 square feet is usable for display, because people would be walking through there. And if you've got something to sell, if people are walking past a wall, you want to put something on it to sell. So, it's actually not a bad, frankly, the only thing that's useful for is to, to display stuff to buy. It can't be used for treatment or anything else. The regulations, too, are, are, you know, it's, it's, um, there's something awkward about the regulations when it says the front 50 feet need to be used for allowed uses. It doesn't make any accommodation for the fact that there is a stair there. It's kind of gross square footage. Yeah, there's a stair there. Yeah, there's this structural thing over here, this little room, which is going to be hard to use, but we'll figure out a way. There are, this space back here, that Dr. Maltin was talking about, there are actually three safes back here. It's virtually unusable space. That's where probably the, the patient files will end up in the, in the safe. So, it's, it's, the building, because of its history, has some real difficulties to, to use.
Mr. Parisi?
Steve, as Planning and Zonings, is this the plan they saw?
This is not the plan they saw. And I would certainly, I will leave this one with you tonight, and I will have copies of this at, at the office tomorrow morning, if, if that is useful.
Well, I, I guess I'm a little concerned that Planning and Zoning asked to see any modifications or changes. I'm curious why you wouldn't honor that request and go back there.
Actually, there's, I, I think it's safe to say there've been two meetings already, and this is the latest. Part of what happened was, the application went in, and frankly, the application is very ambitious. The application said, "We don't need to give you any plans, because we want the whole building to have a variance, so that we can provide medical offices in the whole building." That's the perfectly consistent application you have in front of you. Then, as a result of comments from staff, we decided we should be better neighbors and see what we could do to be more in compliance. And so, the reason why this didn't end up yet at Planning and Zonings' office is that it's been, frankly, the ink is still wet on it. We've, we've moved more and more and more toward trying to be in compliance, to the point where, at this point, we're frankly tickled pink that we're not asking for anything other than compensatory space.
The only thing I'm having a problem with is why you wouldn't go back and show them this plan.
Yeah, we, okay, so...
Unless I'm missing something.
No, you're not missing something. And there is a scenario whereby you decide to continue this, and we, we bring it back to Planning and Zoning for, to staff for comments. I can tell you, I mean, I can't put words in staff's mouth, even though I really want to, that they will say that we've come a long way, and that we've worked hard on it. And they probably won't be ecstatic, but they will agree that we've done everything that we can to, to, to comply with the spirit of the regulation.
See, that's why I don't know why you don't go back there and get their blessing.
And, and if, if that blessing makes you feel more comfortable, and I can understand it, then I would suggest that we continue the hearing. There, it's complicated and it's difficult.
It is.
There are six different ways that we could solve this problem. We're trying to figure out the most practical way. Do we wish, don't get me started on the definition of medical office. That is just flat-out wrong. A medical office is not an office. It generates 10 times more traffic than office use. And the interesting thing is that the Planning and Zoning regulations even include in the regulations that you need more parking for medical office than for office, because they know that it generates more traffic. So, to treat a medical office like an office is just flat-out wrong. But we have to choose our battles. We have to figure out how we can get this to be approved, so that we can save that spectacular space. And this seemed like the best path. And if it takes them another month, that's not the end of the world. We would want to stay on this path. I don't want it to go and try to change Planning and Zonings' regulations. I know that can take months and months and months. I really want this project to proceed for all of us, and this, I think, is the best path. So, saying, "Stephen, take another month. Show this to staff, so that they can respond however they, they choose to respond." I'm optimistic that the response will be significantly more positive than it was for our first application, where we said, "We want everything."
Will you do that?
We would welcome a continuation of, of the hearing for a month, if, if that's what you choose.
I'm just thinking out loud, Mr. Chairman. You're the, you're the boss here.
Mr. Chairman, if I will, I would, I would, staff would concur that I believe we should have some more time to evaluate modification to the application or the proposal than we have been privy to. And you have a chance to look at it. And if the applicant is open to a continuance, at best, I would recommend that you make a motion to continue there.
Make a motion to continue Application 20-004 till next month's meeting, which will be Monday, March 16, 2020. We have a motion in a second.
Motion to approve. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Zawinski?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, to approve.
Chairman Rice?
Yes, to approve.
Thank you. See you next month.
Pardon?
Thank you. See you next month.
I hope so. I want to be here.
I do as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a minutes to approve? Minutes to approve? We have minutes to approve? Yeah. Which minute is it? Those, November? We have November's minutes to approve here? We have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve minutes from Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, Monday, November 18, 2019.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If there's no more business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion?
So will move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.